Good afternoon, everyone. The September 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:04 PM, and I'm Sarah Nelson, Council President. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Rink.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss. Council President Nelson.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. I have a proclamation proclaiming September 7th, 2025 to be Seahawks 50th Season Day, and this proclamation will be signed and presented at today's meeting. I will share comments on the proclamation, and then I'll open the floor for comments from my colleagues. After Councilmember comments, we'll affix our signatures and then spend the rules to present the proclamation to our guests and allow our guests to provide brief comments. I'll let people get settled briefly. Okay. All right, moving on. Welcome. The Seattle Seahawks will begin their historic 50th season in the NFL this Sunday, September 7th, when they play the San Francisco 49ers. What began as an expansion team in 1976 has become one of our city's most cherished icons. And the 12s represent more than just the city of Seattle fans, of course. They span all of Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, Alaska, with millions of passionate and extremely loud, I'll add, followers across the nation and even around the world. We are proud to have hosted all 50 seasons of Seahawks football right here in Seattle, including dozens of playoff games and three conference championships. The Seahawks are a symbol of our city and embody the pride of the Pacific Northwest. This was on full display in 2013 at Super Bowl XLVIII, perhaps the most resounding football championship victory of all time, when they beat the Denver Broncos 43 to 8. This legacy of success on and off the field has driven the team for the past 50 years, resulting in 180 consecutive sold-out home games, and that's over just 22 years. All right, as community leaders, they have greatly contributed to the people of Seattle and our region. Players, coaches, and the organization itself have contributed to more than 2,500 charities in our region, supported youth, social justice, and veterans, and that's to say nothing of the massive economic benefit small businesses in the stadium area and across our region receive from fans buying gear, attending games, watching the team at local restaurants and bars, et cetera. So thank you very much as the Economic Development Chair. As the team reaches this milestone season, we take a moment to honor the five decades of contributions to our city and celebrate the more than 1,200 players who have worn the Seahawks' uniform, leaving their mark on the team's legacy in games played first at the King Dome and now at Lumen Field. I'm especially excited to welcome Seahawks legend and Ring of Honor member Jim Zorn to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Seattle Seahawks Organization. Jim represents the best of the Seahawks through his eight years as our starting quarterback and seven years on the coaching staff. As a player, he was the AFC Offensive Rookie of the Year in 1976, recorded three consecutive 3,000-yard seasons, and became the first Seahawk to record back-to-back 300-yard passing games. As coach, he led the quarterbacks' room from 2001 to 2008, mentoring Matt Hasselbeck into a Pro Bowl quarterback who broke many of Jim's own franchise records, including leading the team to its first Super Bowl appearance in 2005. Like many former Seahawks, despite being from elsewhere and having played and coached across the country, he chose to make Seattle his home after his professional career. So thank you for that as well. So thank you, Jim, for being here to accept this proclamation, and congratulations to the Seattle Seahawks on this historic milestone of 50 seasons. We look forward to celebrating many more victories in the next 50. With our signatures today, we will hereby recognize the Seahawks' contributions to the community over the past 50 seasons and therefore proclaim the 2025 opening day, September 7th, to be Seahawks 50th Season Day. All right. Okay. Are there any comments from council members before requesting signatures? I'm looking at up and down the dais, and I'm also looking at Councilmember Kettle. Go ahead, please. Uh, Councilmember Saka, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Council President, for bringing this proclamation forward today. I'm honored to be able to sign it as the council member that represents the Stadium District Soto, where the Seahawks play and win. It is an honor to be able to support this proclamation today. I want to thank legendary coach and player Jim Zorn for your contributions to the success of this franchise and organization over many years, many decades. And 50 years is a huge milestone that we should all celebrate, and we are incredibly proud as a city, as your council member that represents this district. I'm incredibly proud of you all and looking forward to at least 50 more years of successes and wins and high hopes and aspirations, and ideally a handful more Super Bowl Lombardi trophies, right? But again, congratulations to 50 years of success. Look forward to welcoming in many more to come. And just want to note that Coach Zorn, of course, you gave him, Council President, the I think you did a great job kind of calling out some of his successes, but when he was inducted into the Seahawks Ring of Honor in 1991, he, in doing that, he became only the second player to receive that honor after another Hall of Famer, Steve Largent. So really honored that the person receiving this proclamation on behalf of the organization today is you, sir. Welcome and congratulations again. Thank you.
Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Chair. Again, met the Seahawks team earlier, but I want to thank you for coming here today and representing a great organization that does such great work for our community, for our city, and really, as Council President noted, for the region. This is not just Seattle. It's, the impact is far and wide. So thank you for that, and, you know, and thank you for, you know, the example that you set, as Councilmember Saka said, Coach Zorn, Mr. Zorn, Jim Zorn, and, you know, all the way back to those kids back when you were playing, to include, I was around that time period, and as you know, I was collecting football cards back then, to include yours, to include Mr. Largent, Steve Largent. And also, given the fact that I grew up in Western New York and like you have settled here, I also have to highlight from the first year, the kicker, who happened to come from the Buffalo Bills as part of the, you know, the startup of the expansion teams. And it's fantastic, and thank you. And I really want to say thank you to the organization for the work that you do with community specifically. I wanted to highlight particularly, we have three veterans on the dais. There's your support to the veterans, and so I have my salute to service cap, and contrary to other depictions, I don't never worn a cap or hat on the dais. And by the way, if I did, I would not wear red, I would wear blue, and so I'm going to put this on, you know, for, you know, for my, for my vote for that.
Special occasion.
So again, thank you to the Seahawks Organization and for representing today. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just want to wax nostalgic for just a moment, because I remember the first year. My mother and I had season's tickets to the Seahawks when the franchise first started, and I remember seeing Coach Zorn under center for the first time, replacing the starting quarterback, and did a fantastic job. And ever since then, it's really hard for me not to be a fanboy right now, and just, you know, again, the opportunity to actually meet you in person, see you face-to-face as opposed to from the stands, and thinking about your career, your coaching career, head coach, quarterback coach, everything that you've done. Again, just much appreciation to you, much appreciation to the Seahawks, and again, I'm looking forward to another 50 years. So thank you. Go Hawks!
Yes. I'm not seeing any, uh, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not a veteran, though I appreciate all your collective service given to our country, but I do want to congratulate the Seahawks, and I will say that the one thing, well, many great things about the Seahawks, but it's this unifying piece where it brings the city together. Everyone, when there's a game, is rooting for the Seahawks. We are the 12th person on the team, and I think that's been a very unifying message for a very long time. And so I want to congratulate you on your 50 years, and also thank you for being a voice of unity and a thing of unity across our city, when many times there are a lot of things happening that brings distress and anxiety. It's nice to have anxiety around our team winning and not something, you know, very difficult across the city. So that's a good thing in my mind, and so thank you for being a unifier in our city.
Okay. Not seeing any other comments or hands raised here. So, hearing no further discussion, just a second, I just lost my place. Hearing no further discussion on the proclamation, will the clerk please call the roll to determine which council members would like their signatures affixed to the proclamation proclaiming September 7th as Seahawks 50th Season Day?
Councilmember Juarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Go Hawks!
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Eight signatures will be affixed.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. If there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended to present the proclamation and allow our guests to accept it and provide remarks. All right, hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended, and the proclamation will now be presented. And after it is, Drew Johnston, Managing Director, Government Affairs and Compliance, Mike Flood, Vice President of Outreach and External Affairs, and Seahawks legend and former player and coach Jim Zorn will provide some brief remarks to the council and the members of the public. All right.
Hawks! Why you bring a football?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Wait, it's not the Hawks.
Oh, gosh.
Would you love to...
Fuck me, and I was right, right? I was like, wait.
I'm saying person.
And I do feel like I've played in the 1700s that time.
That's where I said, okay, so.
I know what he says mean. No, no, when I was here, I was supposed to always start coming at the end of my term. That was on him. That's right.
So you just shake.
Oh, that's why.
All right, there you are.
Thank you so much.
And...
Well, can I just go back and forth here? And I won't take much time. I know time is valuable. Thank you so much, thank you so much for the kind words and the thoughts about not only myself representing Seattle, but I, you know, the team, the fans, I just, I'm one guy, right? Representing a lot of people in the Seahawk community. You know, first, you know, I got to be a player, and what has been really impressive is how many players still call Seattle home. And you're exactly right, Councilman, that there are a lot of, there's a lot of involvement within every town and city. We get all over the place, from border to border, and there's Seahawks represented from border to border. I know Sam Atkins lives close to the Canadian border, and Kurt Warner, who's in the Ring of Honor as well, he lives at the southern part of our border. And Dan Dorick, Dr. Dorick, lives in Spokane. So we cover all bases, and it's been a great career. It's been great to continue to be involved with the Seahawks. You know, they've asked me to come here and accept this. I'm only representing all of the alumni, right? All of the guys who have played for the Seahawks, and we've got a pretty good team that is going to represent on Sunday, September 7th, and it's those pesky 49ers we're playing. When I played, it was the Raiders. We did not like the Raiders. You know, they were just the Raiders, not very good. Yeah, yeah, you just say, "No, thank you." Now, it's the 49ers, kind of the same area, but it'll be a battle. And those kinds of games are really hard-fought. This is a team that, in 2025, has a lot of new looks to it, with a new quarterback in Sam Darnold and new, a new coach, part of the coaching staff is brand-new as well. So it'll be a hard-fought battle. And I will say, everybody looks forward to this season, but every season, because I get to come to all these games, and when I played, we parked with, we parked with the fans. And so when Steve and I would walk in, you know, "Hey, have a good game." "Thank you very much." You know, "We hope to have one." And we're just in the parking lot, walking in. Nowadays, it's a little different, but what is so incredible are the fans and what the fans go through, not only in ritual, because, you know, a lot of people have superstitions, so it's lucky to wear their face makeup, but they also, they're intelligent. We have intelligent fans in our community. And they're smart about football, so they know when to yell, when not to yell, when Mr. Official is making a mistake, and when he's making the right call. And so I just, I'm a fan myself. I'm a little more sophisticated in that. I look at, I look at other things. I don't necessarily follow the ball all that, you know, every single play, but the fans really have made it possible for a team like Seattle to exist. And this city, I know that you support the stadium as well, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, somebody has to research this, but, you know, the King Dome was imploded after 20 years in the city of Seattle, and the new stadium built. Now, after 20 years of the new stadium, it has been, and please check this, fact-check this, but I think it was voted the number-one stadium in the National Football League after 20 years. Can you believe that this stadium has been in existence just as long as the King Dome was in existence?
My fact-checker confirms.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. And I'd want to say the King Dome was louder, but I've had to plug my ears in this stadium as well. So I say, "Go Hawks." Can't wait until Sunday to watch the ballgame, and I'll, do you want to say a few words? This is Mike Flood, who I admire, and he's been a Seahawk for 28 years, right? He's been working at the Seahawk office for that long, and he's got ties to our veterans as well. So take it away, Mike Flood.
Jim, you're great, thanks. I love what you said about the Seahawks and the community and how it unifies people, and one of my jobs is to work with, one of my joys, actually, is to work with fans here in the Seattle area and beyond. We have, when Paul Allen bought this team, there were 700 members of the Seahawk Booster Club. Now there's 12,000. Last year, they raised $600,000 for charity and donated 37,000 hours of volunteer time. That goes from Seattle to Alaska, where Jim has been with us up there, and all across the country and over in Europe. But it is a unifying factor, and we're proud of that, and we're, your remarks are so beautiful today, because that's the thing that we're proud of, and what Paul, when Paul saved this team from moving to LA, he said, "I want this team to be a factor on and off the field." And so we continue to live up to that ideal, and we thank you for honoring us today. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, go Hawks! Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Thank you very much for coming today. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period. Public comment is limited to items on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, and the council work program. Clerk, please let us know how many people are signed up today.
We have 12 in person and two remote.
Okay, we'll give everyone two minutes, and we will begin with the, let's do 10 in-person, then the remotes, and then go back. Thank you.
Okay, speakers will be, will be called in that order. Speakers will hear a chime. When 10 seconds are left of their time, speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call on the next speaker. We'll begin with the in-person speaker.
The first three speakers, Alan Francis, Linda Soriano, and then Channel Horner. Alan?
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Francis. I'm here to speak about a crisis that is visible on every street corner of our city, the urgent need for more shelter in Seattle. The data is clear. According to the 2024 point-in-time count, nearly 17,000 people were experiencing homelessness in King County on a single night. A significant portion of these individuals, almost 10,000, were unsheltered. This means they were sleeping outside, in vehicles, or in places not meant for human habitation. We are not just talking about statistics, we're talking about our neighbors, our friends, and our fellow community members. The current system simply does not have the capacity to meet this overwhelming need. Shelters are often full and may have barriers, like not allowing pets, partners, or personal belongings, that prevent people from getting the help they desperately need. Providing a safe, warm bed is not just a matter of compassion, it's critical first step towards stability. It allows individuals to focus on their health, find employment, and work toward a more permanent solution. By investing in and expanding our shelter system, we are investing in the well-being and future of our entire city. I urge you to prioritize funding and policy that will create more accessible shelter spaces now. Thank you.
After Linda, it'll be Channel.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Linda Soriano. I'm a 72-year-old elder enrolled with the Great Lummy Nation. Today, I'm just here to speak to you on homeless and housing issues. The political climate under Trump has been causing life-saving programs to be defunded, as you well know. We are all in a crisis. Today, I'm focusing on the homeless crisis. In November 2015, Seattle City and County declared a state of emergency on homelessness. In 2024, just last year, we had a 46% increase in homelessness. This is a continued crisis that the current council has inherited, and you have got to deal with it. You have to fix it. Obviously, policies have not been working. 500 new shelter beds are not enough. I propose that you open the red doors so the people can sleep safely inside now. It's a crisis. We need emergency shelter right now, tonight. Listen to the local advocates, who know what they're talking about. They have been advocating on the homeless and housing issues for many years. One of them, who is Anitra, she'll be speaking also, she has been speaking on these issues since 1995. What has changed? Not much. The people are dying out there. All these individuals, the advocates and nonprofits, have been giving you firsthand information to utilize their knowledge. How many council members, how many council presidents, both city and county, how many more of you will serve your term before more people stop dying and suffer while yet homeless? Without shelter, people will continue to die. Is my time up?
Yes, sorry. You're welcome to sit. Thank you.
Channel Horner, and then we have George. I can't, sorry, George with, it starts with an H?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, but first we have Channel. And then George, thank you.
Hello, I'm Chanel. I'm an activist with Stop the Sweeps, and ever since the city towed my bus, I called home. I've been at the Interestate Tiny Homes, but because I don't have an income, they won't be able to get me into actual housing. Now that we have a big, beautiful bill and the executive order on homelessness to contend with the future, my future and the future of my fellow peers seems bleak. If Trump is going to involuntarily arrest or detain the unhoused, then it should be up to the city of Seattle to step up and open 500 more shelter beds for its most vulnerable community, not just throw people back on the streets again solely because there's not enough housing to go around, like Lehigh ends up doing the majority of the time.
Now we have George, and then following George, I believe it's Tom Brown.
Hello. Thanks for letting us talk today. My name's George Hacker. I have a messy handwriting, so you couldn't see that, but I'm the external coordinator for Nicholsville in the Central District, and I'm here today because the need for emergency shelter is still very urgent. For two years, we've been working to open our third self-managed tiny house, Village Brighton Village. Many, many of you have heard about this for the last two years. Still not open. Following every requirement we set by, was set by KCRHA and HSD, we've done it all, yet we still are at a standstill. Despite multiple requests for months, HSD has unable to draft a lease agreement, also they don't know how to do one, and our permit cannot move forward without it. Meanwhile, unsheltered homeless people are still at an all-time high in Seattle. Since we started the project of Brighton, 800 people have died. We could have stopped some of that, 800 people since we've started this project. We cannot afford further delays. There are steps we can take now, moving the houses, connecting utilities, but we can't do anything without a lease. Time is short, and cold weather will be setting in soon. So I urge you to prioritize emergency shelter for those living in the unsheltered in Seattle. People are counting on you. We need your help. Nicholsville strongly supports SHARE, has called for 500 new shelter beds, but we must act now. I want to add one more little thing, because I didn't know we had two minutes, but I didn't realize until today that downstairs, there's a shelter that's not being used. That is criminalism. You know, there's people out there sleeping right outside, and there's a shelter downstairs not being used. Why is that? That, to me, is, it seems like that's something that you guys can fix now, right? Open the red door down there, let people come in, let them have shelter. Each one of us, you know, when you don't have shelter, you don't know how it is. People really go through a lot of mental things. They need that door to shut. They need that door open so they go in there and shut. Thank you very much for your time.
I believe it's Tom, last name Brown, and then Anitra. Thank you.
When you hear that ding, that means you have, excuse me, when you hear the ding, it means you have 10 more seconds.
Hello. I'm from Nicholsville, too. My name is Tim, and I'm from the Central District Village. I'm here to call on support in finally opening the Brighton Village on Rainier. It's the third self-managed tiny village in Seattle. Throughout the past two years, we've done everything asked of us by KCRHA and HSD, including weekly meetings to ensure compliance, yet HSD has been stalling when it comes to providing a lease agreement that's required for the permit, which is halting us from proceeding forward. We have been ready to act. It's simple, one, two, three. We move in the houses on the property, set up utilities, and then prepare for the participants, but again, only with a permit. Every day is a delay that costs money and lives. Over 800 people have died unsheltered or from violence on the streets since this journey began. It's simply unacceptable, and I am here to ask the council to prioritize emergency shelters and remove timely barriers so projects like the Brighton Village can move forward and Seattle's most vulnerable citizens can have a place to sleep that's safe. They cannot wait any longer. We stand strong in support with SHARE's call for 500 new shelter... We stand strong in support with SHARE's call for 500 new shelter beds. You must hear us. You must act now. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We have Anitra. Following Anitra will be Julia Buck, and then Bill Clifford.
Good afternoon. My name is Anitra Freeman, and as Linda said, I've been a participant with WHEEL and SHARE homeless organizing efforts since 1995. There have been some changes over the years, but homelessness still keeps rising. And as Alan said, we have an appalling level of unsheltered homeless people in Seattle, and without shelter, people die. We stand... WHEEL stands Women in Black Vigils right out front on those steps when homeless people die in King County. WHEEL and SHARE have been campaigning all year for 500, just 500, new shelter beds in Seattle. And so far this year, the only new shelter beds have been the ones that WHEEL and SHARE created without funding. Without funding, we have created our first family shelter, 20 adults plus children. Without funding, we created... WHEEL created a new nighttime shelter for 12 women because we were seeing so many extra women in our shelters. It's time for everybody else to step up to, as the raging granny say, "Get off your duff." We need more shelter now. Thank you.
We have Julia Buck, and then Bill Clifford.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm here to make a talk today about two different solutions. One solution is CCTV and RTCC. SPD budgeted $1.5 million for the pilot program. The actual cost is now $10 million for 2025 and 2026, and $5.7 million every year after that. Also, two weeks ago, the DHS stipulated that block grants that fund the Real-Time Crime Center must share their videotape with ICE. As of the end of June, 70 U.S. citizens have been deported by ICE, including a four-year-old taken from his cancer treatment, along with over 200,000 immigrants. Councilmember Kettle said, "We don't need to see data to see if it works." And next week, the council will be hearing about expanding this. In contrast, Housing First is a proven intervention with DHS studies from the Bush administration showing that it works. It's why the Obama administration in 2009 went Housing First to address our shameful percentage of unhoused veterans and saw remarkable program success. Share and WHEEL has been asking for 500 beds since at least November 2, 2024. And $5 million could fund quite a number of shelter beds. I would like council to change course. But if council will not change course, I would like council to tell these people the truth, that you would rather fund Donald Trump's deportation agenda than the well-being of people who have been displaced in Seattle. Thank you.
Bill, and then after Bill will be Patrick McKee.
I missed the memo that the RTCC thing had been postponed a week, but that gives you an extra week to consider three things I'd like you to bear in mind. The first one is due diligence. We don't have any. We're going to wait two years for a report on that. We have an anecdote from Captain Britt that they caught a bad guy with closed-circuit TV. I have another anecdote. I just rode the 14 past 12th and Jackson, and there was at least two people stooped over in the fentanyl lean and a whole bunch of sketchy hanging out, so it's not working there. I have an 81-year-old friend who walks up around the area of 127th and Aurora. He counted 29 sex workers, trafficking victims, whatever you want to call them up there. It's not working up there. I drove the E-line for a long time. For some reason, all this business stops right at 145th. Maybe some of this money could be diverted to more effective policies. It's been 55 years since we cleaned up the ICE squad, and there might be something going on there. I don't know. I just spoke to somebody in the city's decarbonization program. She says AI is going to run up rates for city light ratepayers. It's a hugely energy-intensive technology. This is adding to it. And finally, I'd like you to think about what happens when you... In the odd circumstance that you get a president who ignores the Constitution and a vice president that has endorsed a book that calls for assassination of his political opponents. What if you go speak at Garfield High School? You also speak to a young man who burns a flag, which was now going to become a felony, and they go back and look at those tapes and decide you're a conspirator? Thank you.
So we have Patrick. And then after Patrick will be Bennett Halston. And then we'll go into remote speakers.
Hi, my name is Patrick McKee. It's not extreme to say that America is undergoing an actual fascist power grab right now. The thing they told us couldn't happen here is... We've heard brave statements from our governor publicly, from our mayor, our police chief, and a few city council members in smaller venues. We certainly haven't seen the kind of full-throated refusal of fascism displayed last week in Chicago. And really, it's past time for that sort of courage. But I take our civic leaders at their word that they are opposed to the fascist coup intent on destroying our democracy. So why is the city council unquestioningly providing fascists with the tools of our own further subjugation, implementing around-the-clock unwarranted surveillance all over the city? I'm talking about the installation of real-time crime center cameras and the utilization of existing private residential and commercial surveillance. We're told the information won't be shared with ICE, but it already has been. Right here in King County, the housing authority has been sharing Flock automatic license plate reader data with outside agencies. This is real. The council will be proceeding immorally and irresponsibly in authorizing further expansion of Flock or similar technologies in Seattle. Inherently and inevitably, Flock is collaborating with fascists. And if you authorize RTCC, you will be too, because ICE, red state prosecutors, the weaponized Justice Department have every intention of using this data against us. The only thing protecting us is the civil liberties scruples of law enforcement. And sorry, despite the best intentions of many officers, as well as, I take his word for it, the new chief, SPD has a real crime, real-time crime problem of its own, real-time fascism. We've seen the statements of so-called police union leaders, the Seattle's record-high attendance of active officers at January 6 Capitol crime spree. We've heard the allegations of racism by black officers. Do any of you imagine that Tom Homan or Pam Bondi aren't going to find accessories willing to provide data from Seattle PD's surveillance system? Stop it.
Bennett Halston?
Good afternoon, Council. So I was part of the counter protest against the anti-gay, like, rock concert rally thing that happened at Gas Works Park on Saturday. This was organized by a man named Sean Foyt, who is on record saying, quote, "The LGBTQ+ mafia is a cult bent on perverting and destroying the innocence of every child that they can." I'm just making clear, because some news sources have been reporting this as a Christian rally or even a far-right rally, and that's kind of underselling what the problem is and why people were there protesting. But despite that, as you're probably aware from the events back in May, which was a lot of the same people, when there were 23 arrests of counter protesters at the rally at Cal Anderson, and then two days later, they had the rally here at City Hall Park, and there were eight more arrests. This time, there were... I think technically, there was one arrest because a guy attacked a far-right streamer who was there, but basically, zero. And so the question is, why were there so much fewer conflicts, less violence, and less arrests this one? So part of it could be attributed to it being moved from Cal Anderson, the heart of the traditionally gay neighborhood of Seattle, out to Gas Works. I don't think that's entirely it. Gas Works is still a cherished part of the city since the 1970... Damn it, Sarah, since the 1970! I meant, not the 1700s. And then they... Blah, threw me. And also because the number of protesters was fewer, but it was not as skewed as the difference in the number of arrests. And I think the main reason was that SPD allowed people to protest in an area where they could be seen by the event attendees. Because remember, the First Amendment says you have the right to gather. You do not have the right, for your field of vision, to be free of people disagreeing with you. When they had the rally out here in City Hall, they actually told people that they had to clear out 4th Avenue in front of City Hall so the people who wanted to couldn't even wave flags or signs showing that they disagreed with them. This time at Gas Works Park, they had the stage set up so that people were facing north. Behind that was the hill and the concrete structure so that people could wave the trans flag and the pride flags right behind the concert singers the whole time. It was awesome. Thank you.
I'll now move into remote speakers.
Our first remote speaker will be BJ Last, followed by David Haynes. And a reminder to our remote speakers to please press star six when you hear the prompt that you have been unmuted. Go ahead, BJ. Okay, it doesn't look like BJ is on the line. We're going to move on to David Haynes. Go ahead, David. Have you pressed star six? There you are.
Hi, thank you, David Haynes. In the name of Labor Day, the workers need a three-and-a-half-day work week, seven-day pay. Take it from the non-working shareholder middleman who never want to share the unforeseen capital gains that gets drained every three months. That said, we can stand up all the emergency capacity shelter that we need for the drug addiction, the mental crisis, and the innocent homeless, to process folks to a better path using the noble National Guard to stand up a bunch of authorized encampments throughout the city, the county, and the state with community service officers providing security with low barrier. You know how there's so many crimes that are dramatically down in Washington, D.C.? It's not because of the lies by Democrat operatives manipulating statistics, similar to lies told by Seattle data based on place of 911 call. It has to do with the National Guard taking the place of the police who were required to run security at the Union Station and at the Smithsonian and other buildings, and letting those cops go actually fight crime. And it's made a real difference. Yet, nobody in Seattle wants to solve the public safety crisis or the homeless crisis because some are happy when people are sad and they're jealous mad when people are glad. And you all are pulling the punches on the mayor, who has sabotaged police reform his whole political career. And Seattle doesn't want to work with Trump to solve the public safety and the homeless crisis, and yet he has promised to spend billions of dollars to solve these problems. And yet, you all would rather appease evil voting blocs who enjoy when people suffer more. And the leaders that are attaining these racist, well-perverted, scorned, unstable voting blocs of scorned experiences that are dumping their trauma are creating the continued bad policies that are exacerbating the public safety and the homeless crisis.
Thank you. Your time is up. And we're going to try BJ Last once more. And BJ, if speaking, will be followed by Joe Kuntzler. Go ahead, BJ, and please remember to press star six.
Hi, this is BJ Last. Can you guys hear me this time?
Yes.
Cool, thank you. My name's BJ Last, here to speak against the proposed expansion to CCTV and RTCC. I want to mention a few things that have happened in the time since this was approved and the Public Safety Committee meet and the Public Safety Committee through today. So Tom Homan has visited Seattle. ICE, including Pam Bondi and Kristi Noem, have mentioned that ICE is going to be stepping up its activity in Seattle, but that's going to be increasing starting this month, in fact, actually, starting today. You know, Mike Solon... Or Trump has said that he actually wants to take over other cities. Seattle has even explicitly been named at times in terms of what other cities this administration plans to send troops into. Mike Solon, the president of SAG, who was elected by the Seattle cops, has come out and praised Trump's takeover of DC, calling it a model. Additionally, we found out that in DC, the Trump administration now has control of DC's RTCC. So DC's Real-Time Crime Center, yeah, that now belongs to the Trump administration and all the information they've been collecting. So claims that it can't get to the feds, again, really not actually... They need to be real. In fact, they're not real at all. Also, it came out just today in The Intercept that the person, the cop from Atlanta that was selling Seattle officials on TUCIS for its RTCC last year, or two years ago, turned out to actually be working for Axon, they're a member of Axon's board. Seattle officials claimed that they were duped and, you know, totally surprised to find this out. And this totally would have impacted their procurement decisions if they'd known that the cop sitting there pitching them on this actually had invested financial interest in getting the city to buy this technology. Additionally, we found out that currently, there are almost 500 private cameras already registered with SPD to start feeding data into this crime center. So Seattle really needs to actually put the brakes on this, because that's what people have said.
Thank you, BJ. Your time is up. Your time is up, BJ. Thank you. Our last remote speaker will be Joe Kuntzler. Joe, go ahead, please.
Hi, Joe Kuntzler here. It's an honor to call the CL City Council again. A lot's on my mind. And number one, thank you for throwing out Adolph Zimmerman for a month. I understand he was just... I could be wrong, you know, but I understand that he was just found criminally insane by Bellevue and is trying to appeal that. Could be wrong. Ask him about it. Moving along to other exciting stuff. I understand that your mayor and your council president want us to somehow find the money to afford both West Seattle and Ballard. I think the priority should be Ballard. There's more people there. Everybody loves Heidi Wells. You name the Ballard station the Heidi Wells station. I can tell you right now, it will be a lot easier to get at least that built. The NIMBYs around West Seattle really torque off Mr. Go Sun Transit because, you know, if people don't want sexy white rail, they shouldn't get it. And, you know, and maybe that's the line to be put on hold until you get the line to Ballard done. And I don't really think you need a second rail tunnel. I think you have human operators. I think you've got enough tech. I mean, TransLink can run automated trains every two to three minutes going through stations with their Skytrain with Vancouver, British Columbia, Canada. So, you know, you really don't need a second tunnel, especially a deep one that's going to mess up connections between lines. So, you know, I think you're kind of on the right track there, but I'm just a little concerned. And, you know, and finally, I will just say that, you know, I really want to welcome back Councilmember Deborah Duraz. I'm really happy she's back. Hopefully, we'll now see some decorum and law and order in these council chambers and no more anti-Semitism like we see out of Alex Zimmerman. Thank you for your public service. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Joe. That was our last remote speaker.
In-person speakers, and I believe we have Lawaina M. Gracides, and then Alex Zimmerman, and one more after that. Apologies for mispronunciation.
Hi, aloha. I'm part of Cherry Whale, part of the homeless individuals. Hi, my name is Lawaina Maya Lenny Gracides. I'm born. I'm 52 years old. And being part of this homeless thing, we got into trouble in Hawaii, too. So now my family been, I don't know, dying. My niece Kylie passed away, too. My son is a military child, too. He passed away, too. So I don't know if there's any involvement with Seattle's missing blog because I believe in my heart that my brother Donna Boy Jr. Gracides of Battery Recharge Forklift also never showed up home back in 2024 at my mom's funeral. I got put in a body bag, too, about 10 years ago. I don't know. It's strange, but I've been found alive. But there's only two people that... Three people are supposed to be registered with a real death certificate. And apparently, a majority of my family from Hawaii to here, like the Maui Fire, tragic. We lost a lot of family members. So I'm up here justifying for myself for peace also that they need 500 beds for homeless people, and I'm part of the homeless association. I pretty much don't want my own place. I would like to be living with the other homeless ladies, like, with bunks and all that. I'm afraid for myself, for safety now, knowing that I have no place to go. We have no homes. Our $100 a year government funding got stolen from us, so we... Our hundred, our dollar a year government funding got stolen from us, so we don't have our Hawaiian grants also. So we just, the system for homelessness is way better here in Seattle, not in Hawaii. So, but thank you very much.
We have Alex Zimmerman, and then Holly.
Yeah. You can open, yeah. Alex Zimmerman, yeah, it's me. I want to speak about Agenda Number Six, about you appoint people. You always appoint 100 people, include commission, council, and blah, 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 you know what it means. And I try and understand, what is these people doing? I never see these people here. It's very interesting for me. I think all people who you appoint have same standard like you. What is kind of standard? Dori, dem, Nazi, stop up fascist?
Stop. You've been warned. Please, this is abusive language. It is disruptive behavior. Have a seat, please.
You cannot interrupt me. I'm doing absolutely legally everything.
Council President, I'd like to do a point of order as well and support you. Madam Clerk, do we, can we note that on the record that this is the third time in City Council?
What are you talking about?
And if we do, can we cut the mic, Clerk? Can we cut the mic, please? Thank you. We're done. We're done.
Nope. We're not going to do that anymore.
Security, thank you, sir.
You have repeatedly disrupted council proceedings. You have been warned many times before. You will be excluded from council meetings now for 30 days.
Thank you, Council President.
We have Holly.
One more, one more note, one more note, one more note before we go back, Council President, if I may say.
Yes.
So that is the third or fourth time, and we've endured racial, ethnic comments from Mr. Zimmerman, and I'm hoping that he has a suspension for 30 days and it's on notice. I also like the record to reflect that when he says bendita, he's referring to me and any other Latina up here, and he's done that. And so I want to thank you for your leadership in making sure that we stop the hateful speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that validation and for your strong voice. Hold on. Wait a minute, we have to turn, I'm sorry, we're going to turn the mic back on and put the clock back to zero. All right, maybe two minutes. Are we ready? Is it on? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Holly Heap. I'm here on behalf of, my daughter and I, we're crime victims. Let's speak a little more. I'm here on behalf of my daughter and I, we're crime victims, and I'm domestic violence, and I've been stalked and harassed for a while now, and I've lost my home. I've lost a car. I've been through 27 tires. And I've been trying to get ahold of domestic violence detectives from SPD. Nobody's getting back with me, and I can't get ahold of anybody, and I don't know what to do. So I just want to know what's going on with the case and everything. I've been, I've been to court four times with protection orders. He has not been served yet. And I just want to talk to a detective, a DV detective, and I've had multiple officers tell me, you need to talk to a DV detective, and nobody's getting back with me. I keep going to the police department. I just keep getting blown off and shut off, and at this point, I don't know what to do. So I came here to kind of seek help and ask what I should do at this point.
I do not have an immediate answer for you. I will confer with the Public Safety Chair here, and please leave your contact information. Go ahead.
Council President, ma'am, I'll have my staff come in and check in with you to get your information and the details that you're referring to. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda for public comment.
All right, we've reached the end of the list of registered speakers, and the public comment period is now closed. Thank you all for your comments today. All right, if there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. We'll now consider the proposed consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are the minutes of August 11th and 12th, 2025, Council Bill 121061, 121066, and 121067, payment of bills, six appointments from the Park's Public Utilities and Technology Committee, and that's it. Are there any items council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? All right, hearing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
All right, the consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Moving on to committee reports. Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
The report of the Park's Public Utilities and Technology Committee, Agenda Item One, Council Bill 121036 relating to Seattle Parks and Recreation, authorizing superintendent of Parks and Recreation to execute for and on behalf of the City of Seattle concession agreement granting the Kite Cafe LLC the right to exclusive use and occupation for the Golden Gardens Bath House concession premises for the purpose of providing food and concessions for park patrons at Golden Gardens Park. The committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
Thank you for that. Chair Hollingsworth is not here, so as vice chair of the committee, I will be providing the committee report on behalf of her. All right, so Council Bill 121036 authorizes the Park Superintendent to execute a concession agreement for the Kite Cafe to provide food and concessions at the Golden Gardens Park Bath House. It's an initial five-year agreement with an option to renew for a five-year extension. Councilmember had also brought forth three amendments to encourage stability for vendors and expand public benefits. All right, the committee agreed with the council bill as amended, and that is the committee report. Thank you very much. Are there any comments? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Agenda Item Two, Council Bill 121056, authorizing superintendent of Seattle Parks and Recreation to enter into a concession agreement with Magnuson Brewing LLC to occupy and use a portion of the North Shore Recreation Area at Warren G. Magnuson Park to provide food and beverage concessions. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Again, as vice chair of the committee, I'll provide the committee report. Council Bill 121056 is another concession agreement for Magnuson Brewing LLC and Magnuson Park for 10 years with an option to renew for a five-year extension. The committee voted to authorize this and agrees the restaurant brings amazing public benefits and community connections. And she says, thank you. Are there any comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President. As the council member who is honored to represent District Four, where this is located, I have heard from residents and folks that visit the park that they enjoy having Magnuson Brewing there. It is a good amenity for folks that go visit the park, particularly those that go to swim nearby and to sail at Sail Sandpoint, another tenant of Magnuson Park. So I will be supporting this for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I just must say that I do, as a, I do support our local craft beer industry and agree and did vote for this as well, as I'm a member of the committee. I agree that this is a positive benefit for the community, for the park users, and also for small businesses in general. And I like providing stability and the public amenities that come with, and not just beer, but also the other beverages and refreshments that are provided at this space. So are there further comments? I'm not seeing any, so will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will the clerk please read item three into the record?
Council Bill 121057 relating to Seattle Parks and Recreation, authorizing superintendent of Parks and Recreation to accept for and on behalf of the city, for city, excuse me, certain donated improvements for the Seattle Parks Foundation for Westlake Park. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Okay, as vice chair, I will let you know that Council Bill 121057 authorizes the Park Superintendent to accept improvements at Westlake Park as a donation from the Seattle Parks Foundation. And as a, as a community member, I also thank the Seattle Parks Foundation for that. In committee, Parks reviewed the extensive project scope and goals, as well as the outreach and partnership work that was done. They will break ground in September, completed by FIFA World Cup, to host our visitors and set the stage for future improvement plans. The committee voted to approve this council bill, and I hope to have the full council support today. So those are comments from Council, from Chair Hollingsworth, with a digression from me. Are there any comments? Councilmember Kettle?
Council President, thank you. Kind of along the lines of Councilmember Rivera's points, you know, Westlake Park is located in District Seven, and it's been part of the discussions that we've been having as part of the, really part of the broader relationship with the Seattle Parks Foundation. They've been doing great work. They've been, you know, partnering not just with Seattle Parks and Recreation, the department, but also the council, our office and the like, to really push forward on a number of fronts. And I look forward to the work that's going to happen with this, which will be an improvement and is noted for the FIFA World Cup, but afterwards too. This is part of the lead behinds that are going to be really important for our city. And so this investment is going to be great for the, you know, the downtown neighborhood, but also our city across the board. So I just wanted to note and say thank you, in this case, to the Seattle Parks Foundation.
Yeah, and that is ground zero of our retail core of the Central Business District. And so it's very, so even though the timeline is designed for the World Cup, the point is that it is, it will serve Seattleites, visitors, workers for years and years and years to come, and it is definitely an improvement. I also want to thank DSA, the Downtown Seattle Association, for doing so much to activate the park over the years, and this just sort of boosts those efforts into the future. Additional comments? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will the clerk please read item four into the record?
Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 121005 relating to land use and zoning, updating clarifying requirements for solid waste storage, staging areas and access for residential, commercial, and industrial development, adding new requirements for neighborhood residential and industrial zones, updating provisions for alternative arrangements to meet requirements. The committee recommends the bill pass.
All right, Council Bill 121005 is updating solid waste storage and access regulations in the Land Use Code. There was a public hearing held, and updates include codifying standards to match solid waste collection and safety requirements, addressing solid waste storage access and collections in neighborhoods impacted by increased housing densities, and improving safety for pedestrians, residents, and maintenance staff. The committee appreciated this step that is working toward building more housing and supported this ordinance, and I hope for your support as well today. Are there any comments? All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And I got to say, this is a good day to, this is, this agenda is pretty much all parks and SPU. Anyway, will the clerk please read item five into the record?
Agenda Item Five, Council Bill 121043 relating to Harbor Island Superfund Site, authorizing Seattle Public Utilities and CL City Light to agree to orders issued by the United States Environmental Protection Agency regarding remediation of contamination at the East Waterway Operable Unit of the Harbor Island Superfund Site. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Okay, this, this sediments, okay, so Council Bill 121043 authorizes SPU and Seattle City Light to enter into agreed orders with the EPA to clean up the contamination, as well as with other parties to share the cost of implementing the orders. Sediments within the East Waterway of the Duamish River are contaminated from historical pollution from industrial and urban use. All of the costs involved come from SPU and Seattle City Light funds and will not impact the general fund. So that means, I guess, it's coming from ratepayers. We've had the same body of work approved for the Lower Duamish Superfund cleanup back in April, and this is an important responsibility and very crucial work, and the chair asks for your, hopes for your support. Are there any further comments? And this passed three zero. All right. Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, that's it for our committee reports, and there were no items removed from the consent calendar. There's not a resolution for introduction and adoption today. And in the item Other Business, Councilmember Kettle has a proclamation recognizing September 2025 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Seattle for signature today. So I'll ask Councilmember Kettle to introduce the proclamation and seek any final feedback on the proclamation before requesting the roll call for council members to affix their signatures to the proclamation. Councilmember Kettle, you're recognized in order to address the proclamation.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The two words childhood cancer just, to be frank, sends shivers in my spine, and I can imagine for our colleagues here the same in terms of the seriousness, the challenges that are faced, you know, the stories that are told, the impacts on the families, but on the children themselves to include throughout their lives, most likely, as I've known from my own experience with friends of the family. Colleagues, we live in Seattle, which is a center of cancer care and also a center of childhood care, childcare as well, in terms of the medical. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection Report, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. The tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year, and estimated 400,000... An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. Whereas founded over 30 years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic branch of the Max Factor Cosmetics Family and the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, Kids' Cancer Connection Incorporated, along with the Lions Club International, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection provide a vital, variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment to the Seattle Children's Hospital, the Mary Bridge Children's Hospital in Tacoma, the Ronald McDonald House Seattle, and the Fred Hutcherson Cancer Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, family sailing, positive image services, pedicist therapy, art therapy, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, KCC, Supercar Experience, Home and Health Instruction, Music is Medicine, Century Gardening, and hospital celebrations in honor of the children's determination and bravery to fight battle against childhood cancer." The proclamation then concludes, "Therefore, the mayor and the city, the mayor, the City, Seattle City Council proclaims September 2025 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Seattle." So colleagues, I ask for your support. My understanding is that this was with your staffs and yourself, and as I noted, you know, in the second whereas clause, you know, this challenge they face today, but this is long-term. And it says here, you know, the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment. That treatment is very difficult for the children involved, and I think this is something that we should really highlight, and we should also be thankful that in our city, that we do have Seattle Children's. We do have Fred Hutch. We do have all that we do. We're quite lucky in terms of the healthcare capacity on this front that we have in this city. So with that, I ask for your support and your signature with this proclamation. Thank you, Council President.
Are there any comments from colleagues? Councilmember, I don't know who raised their hand first, Councilmember Rivera or Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President. Mine was on a different topic, so come back to me.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Kettle, for bringing this proclamation forward. As a mom of two girls, I can only imagine what families go through and what some of these kids go through, and I agree with you. I feel really lucky to have Seattle Children's in town, Fred Hutch, and also we have a local chapter of the Ronald McDonald House who is here to support families who are not able to afford both treatment and also to provide for housing for the kids as they're getting treatment at Seattle Children's and Fred Hutch. So really appreciate you bringing this proclamation forward. It's something, cancer awareness for children is something that is really important to me. It's something that touches a lot of our lives, and I really appreciate us taking the beat to recognize the many kids, unfortunately, that have to deal with having had cancer and also lose their battles with cancer. I'm sure many of us know kids, I know I do, who's lost, who've lost lives to cancer. So really appreciate you bringing this forward.
Councilmember Kettle, I just simply want to add that you, you're absolutely right. Those two words in one sentence do, it made me gulp, frankly, and, and, but you don't have to be a parent, as I am, to, to recognize the seriousness of, of childhood cancer. My sister is a nurse at Seattle Children's. She has been for about 25 years, probably more than that. But basically, she does, she, she relates to me some of the, the trauma and that the families and children are going through. I am extremely thankful for children's and for all of the institutions that, that move science further in, in our city. We're lucky for that. And I just want to, so I'm just recognizing that there is, there is progress being made, and I also just want to recognize that it is extremely painful and traumatic for the families and children that are going through this. And so it takes all of us to, to bring this to light and then also thank our community. So if there are no further comments, will the Clerk please call the roll on seeing which council members would like their signatures affixed, unless you would like to have any last words?
No, thank you for the comments on point, and yes, thank you.
All right, hearing no further discussion on the proclamation, will the Clerk please call the roll to determine which council members would like their signatures affixed to the proclamation recognizing September 2025 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month?
Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Eight signatures will be affixed.
Thank you very much. Okay, I assume that there is another, so Councilmember Strauss, would you like to, you have other business. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, Tuesday, September 16th is the Tribal Nations Summit. This is the second one that we have hosted. It's great to have DJ D5 back in the house. Hopefully, we'll talk her into moderating again. If not, we'll see what happens. But I am, two, two parts to this. Is it, one, an invitation to everyone? It's an all-day event, starting at 9:00 a.m., ending at 4:00. I'm sure that there will be some activities after 4:00. I am also requesting to be excused from full council on the 16th so that I can stay in attendance.
All right.
And Councilmember Juarez.
Okay.
Both of us.
Oh, thank you. Council President?
Yes.
I just realized that I'm supposed to be excused that day, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Strauss, I believe you've made that request already, but can I, I just need a second to confirm if that request has or has not been made. Jody or Phil, can you please check that information? I'm unable to access that file document right now.
And while they're checking, I'll just say it's nice to hear Jody's voice again. Great to have you back, Jody.
But Councilmember Juan has not made the request officially, so we would need to make a motion to excuse her for the 16th.
If there is no objection, Councilmember Juarez will be excused from the September 16th City Council meeting. Hearing no objection, Councilmember Juarez is excused from the September 16th City Council meeting. All right.
I don't show that we have Strauss excused on September 16th, so let's just do it again to be sure.
Okay, if there is no objection, Councilmember Strauss will be excused from the September 16th City Council meeting. Hearing no objection, Councilmember Strauss is excused from the September 16th City Council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, I see Councilmember Solomon, you have your hand up.
Actually, Councilmember Rivera had her hand up first.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council President. I really just wanted to, I don't think I heard this mentioned, but I wanted to give a shout out to our Seattle Sounders for their win of the League Cup on Sunday. It's today, Tuesday. It's another great sporting event, which brings unity to our city, and so I really wanted to shout out the Sounders for their big win. Thank you.
Thank you very much for, for that, that business, and congratulations, Sounders. Okay, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you very much, Council President. I too am requesting to be excused from the September 16th meeting. I will be, I am intending to be in Vancouver for the Washington State Crime Prevention Association Annual Conference.
All right, just a second, let me get back up there. If there's no objection, Councilmember Solomon will be excused from the September 16th City Council meeting. Hearing none, Councilmember Solomon is excused from the September 16th City Council meeting. All right, scanning the screen for other hands up. All right, seeing none. We've reached the end of today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting is on September 9th at 2:00 p.m. Hearing no further business. It is now 3:24, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.